Good evening, everyone. I call the Wednesday, February the 7th Hampton City School Board Meeting to Order. Ms. Bowles, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Alfonja?
Here.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are present. And at this time, I will turn the meeting over to our student rep, Ms. Sophia.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this, tonight's school board meeting. I'm Sophia Harris. Tonight, we would like to welcome Mr. Landon Jordan from Cooper to do our Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Landon Trayvon Jordan, and I attend Cooper Elementary Magnet School because I love science. Science has always been my favorite subject in school because of all the experiments that comes along with it. While experimenting, it is fun to learn from your mistakes because it teaches you not to make them again. I am also a member of the Cooper Lapcoe Crew. The reason I got accepted is because I scored an A or above on my science ESA, I maintained an A or B in science, and I also wrote an essay on the reasons I wanted to join the group. In addition to science, some of the other hobbies I enjoy are engineering, football, music, and art. I've built a remote-controlled car from scratch, and I've constructed several extensive Lego projects. While playing football, I have held several key positions, and I get better every year. I think that's where I get my competitive side from. Recently, my dad has been teaching me how to play the bass guitar. It's been fun, but I would also like to try the tuba and the trumpet. In conclusion, being the student at Cooper has allowed me to learn so much academically while also exploring the fun hobbies I love, like science experiments, engineering, music, and art. Every school year, I have the best teachers and staff to encourage me in my interests. They are ve- they are all very nice and try their very best to have a fun and safe learning environment. I lo- I've loved the time here at Cooper, and I am excited for the experiences to come in middle school. I know Cooper Elementary Magnet School would be a great place to learn for years to come.
That was very well said. You have some very interesting hobbies, sir. So what would you like to be when you grow up?
I would like to be an entrepreneur and own several businesses.
That is really awesome. Can you tell us who came here with you tonight?
Um, my dad came, my four sisters, my grandmother, my grandfather, my aunt, my granny, and my granddad, and my teacher, and two of my, um, teachers from school, and then my principals.
That's wonderful. Would everyone who came here to support him tonight please stand so we could recognize you? Alrighty, thank you so much, Mr. Jordan.
Well, thank you all for sharing Landon with us tonight. Excellent job, excellent job.
He has one more thing he wanted to share.
He has one more thing? Oh, well, I'll give the floor back to you, sir.
At Cooper, we talk a lot about how we should treat others with kindness. Sometimes, it is important to look out for those we may not know. I would like to share a short story about how showing kindness to others in need. Once upon a time in a forest, a little ant was searching for water. It wandered and wandered until it found a spring, but oh no, the ant slipped and started to drown. Luckily, a kind dove was flying nearby and saw the ant in trouble. The dove quickly grabbed a twig and dropped it into the water. The ant grabbed onto the twig, and the dove drently brought it to safety on the ground. I bet you think that's the end of the story, but no, there was more danger. A hunter was nearby and wanted to catch the dove with a net. The clever ant realized what was happening and jumped into action. So the clever ant crawled under the hunter's foot and began to tickle his foot. The hunter began to laugh so hard, making him drop the net. The dove was able to fly away safe and sound. The moral story of one good action leads to another, so let's remember to show a little kindness to each other. It may just be the twig and the tickle needed to help someone in need. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak at the school board meeting this evening.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna have to remember that a twig and a, a twig and a tickle. That's a tongue twister right there. A twickle and a twig, how about that, huh? Board members, any comments from you all?
Have one, Mr. Chair. Dr. Banks Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Landon, it was a pleasure meeting you this evening, sir, and all of your hobbies were just so impressive, sir. Just know that the sky is always the limit for you, and I can definitely agree with you, the world does need a little bit more kindness, so thank you for sharing.
Mm-hmm. Alright, anyone else? Ms. Cherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Landon, you were so impressive. And not only at the mic, but you were impressive when Dr. Banks Gray and I came down to talk to you earlier. And we were trying to make sure he knew exactly where he needed to stand, what he needed to do with the mic, and he let us know in a very kind way, "I got this." And so, I just came back on the stage. And, and I love your confidence, and most importantly, we talk about it taking a village, you've got a mighty strong village behind you. So always be grateful for the people who love and care and support you. And congratulations to all of you for loaning Landon to us tonight. We appreciate it.
Alright. Any other board members, any comments? Alright, thank you very much, and once again, thank you for sharing him with us, and I greatly appreciate it. Excellent job, and we know it takes the family who's doing a great job, but also thank you to your administrators and to your teachers for supporting you and being here with you tonight, but also for showing up for you each and every day. I stop by Cooper from time to time, and I see all of the great things that you're doing over there, and it clearly shows tonight. So thank you, Ms. Alvia, for all the work that you and your staff are doing over there at Cooper. Thank you. Alright, let's give them another round of applause tonight. And thank you, Sophia. Alright? And so, the next item on the agenda is item 1.03, and that's the adoption of the agenda. And what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved by Mr. Kilgore, and second by Ms. Cherry, that we approve tonight's agenda as presented. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse? Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Alright, item number two, recognitions, and at this time, I will turn the meeting over to Ms. Kelly Goral.
Well, that is a hard act to follow. Landon, he was fantastic. Well, thank you Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of our school board, Superintendent Dr. Haynes, and members of our Hampton City Schools family. Dr. Woodhouse, would you please proceed to the microphone on the stage to assist with tonight's recognition? Alright, so yes, Landon is a hard act to follow, but what I will say is, we have one of our outstanding teachers this evening that we are recognizing, so it's a pretty good act, actually, to follow, Ms. Tracy Bourne. Would Ms. Bourne please join me down front by the podium? I'm gonna have you stand beside me and face the board while I get to give you some kudos, and then you can go out. Alright. So Ms. Bourne, which all of you all know, is a theater and lead pathway teacher for the On Stage Performing Arts Academy at Kickitane High School. Not only is she a fantastic teacher, but she is being recognized this evening also as the recipient of the 2024 Virginia Thespian Educator of the Year Award. Let's give her a round of applause. This prestigious honor shines a spotlight on educators who have made an indelible impact on the world of theater education. The Theater Educator of the Year Award recognizes a Virginia Thespian's board member who works tirelessly to nurture creativity, inspire growth, and ignite a lifelong love for the performing arts and their students. And not to give away a surprise, but we do have some students here this evening that are students of Ms. Bourne, and were very excited to hear that she was being recognized. So from fostering that innovative teaching method to cultivating a nurturing classroom environment, nominees embody the essence of what it means to be an exceptional theater educator. Their dedication, passion, and commitment go beyond the stage, shaping the future of theater and enriching the lives of countless individuals. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Woodhouse.
Ms. Bourne, would you be so kind as to please join me on the stage?
And if you'd like to use the rail, please feel free.
Alright. Before I present Ms. Bourne with her certificate, let me share a bit more about this exceptional educator. Ms. Bourne is in her 23rd year teaching with the Hampton City School System. Miss, uh, she is Kick- she is Kickitane's 2023-2024 Teacher of the Year, and was one of the Hampton City Schools High School Teacher of the Year finalists. She also served as the chap- as the Chapter Director of Thespian, a division of the Educational Theater Association and International Thespian Society. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, the Hampton City School Board, and the Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition for this outstanding accomplishment. And they have asked me to read the certificate. Alright. Certificate of Achievement from the Hampton City School Board. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Ms. Tracy Bourne, Kickitane's High School, Virginia Thespian Educator of the Year Award. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I also have a lovely pen. I thought about keeping it for myself, but I give it, I guess I'll give it to you.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome. At this time, with all of those who have come to, you can stay right here with me, I don't mind. Before she returns to her seat, we would like to recognize the important guests in our audience tonight who are here supporting Ms. Bourne. Would all of you please stand? Family members? Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, let's give her another round of applause. Congratulations. Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse, and we're gonna have him return to his seat behind the dais before our final recognition. Alright, so we do have a second recognition. The month of February marks the annual observation of School Board Appreciation Month, a time to salute the work of school board members and celebrate public education. Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association, or otherwise known as the VSPA, creates a theme for their annual celebration. This year's theme is Building the Future of Public Education, which acknowledges that the school board is the heart of education system, guiding it with kindness and care, which was kind of neat because Landon was just talking about kindness. So you are the twig and the tickle. So you know us, though. We know how we like our themes, and we've kind of switched up a little bit every once in a while. So with this past fall being our Next Generation Storytellers First Film Festival, where we literally brought Hollywood to Hampton, we decided using a Hollywood theme was a great way to recognize our school board members for School Board Appreciation Month. So at this time, I'm going to step away, and I'm going to allow our Master of Ceremonies, so you don't have to hear from me anymore, it will be our Masters of Ceremonies, to take over. So let's everybody give a big round of applause for Gary Skeen.
School Board, thank you so much for allowing me to be here today. It is an honor. My name is Gary Skeen, and I will be your Master of Ceremonies this evening, just in case you didn't get that from the, from the tuxedo that I'm wearing today. You might remember me as the emcee of our film festival that we had this past fall, so it is my honor and privilege to be in front of you guys today. It's my honor to kick off our first ever, oh, yes, this is our first ever Hollywood to Hampton Walk of Fame Ceremony. Now, this would normally be the time in the award show that we would make some maybe lighthearted and fun stories at the expense of our honorees, but as someone who knows all too well what it's like to be at the center of a joke, affectionately known as the Franklin Street Elevator Fiasco, I will spare our honorees tonight. If you are, if you're unable to know what that was about, ask Dr. Haynes later, and he will happily fill you in. But I do have to say, as a recognition of some of our other city workers because of that fiasco, I would like to give my sincere appreciation to the Hampton City Fire Department for their swift and professional services, as I was extracted from the Franklin Street Elevator during the Franklin Street Fiasco. Their expertise and the joys of life truly saved the day. Now, I think it's time for us to get the show started, so let's kick this off, shall Now, I'm wa- I'm not the only special guest of the evening. We decided that we should also bring out some of the next generation of our storytellers from our event, so please welcome, from Kickitane High School, Riley Brooker. Josh Cunnison. And Madison Newton. From Bethel High School, Canary Williams. And also from Bethel, Antonio Pitts. From Hampton High School, Soraya Johnson. And from Phoebus High School, Zion Parks. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, we would like to recognize our school board members as they earned their eternal spot on the Hollywood to Hampton Walk of Fame. Would our board members please come around from behind the dais and stand by your star of fame? They're right here, on the red carpet. There's nothing like a red carpet event. We got it? Okay, yes, they found their stars. So first, Dr. Richard Mason, in his best supporting role as school board chair. He has served seven, I mean, served six years on the Hampton School Board, and is now in his third year as chair. Dr. Tina Banks Gray, best supporting role as a school board vice chair, has served four years on the board and is now in her second year as vice chair. Ms. Stephanie Alfon- I mean, Stephanie Jackson Alfonja, as best supporting role as a school board member, and has served the board for four years. Ms. Ann Cherry, as best supporting role as a school board member, has served eight years on the board and has served in the roles of vice chair and chair. Dr. Reginald Woodhouse, as best supporting role as a school board member, has served eight years on the board and has served in the role of vice chair. Mr. Jason Samuels, as the best supporting role as a school board member, he has served on the board for 10 years, and has served in the role of chair. And last, but certainly not least, with 14 years of service, Mr. Joseph Kilgore, as best supporting role as a school board chair member, and has served in the roles of vice chair and chair. On behalf of our, our staff members, students, families, and the community of Hampton, please accept this small token of appreciation for serving on our school board. We recognize the hard work, dedication, commitment, and enthusiasm you each bring to Hampton City Schools. Please applaud. Also, do not fear, we've already contacted Landon's people, and he's gonna be hosting next year with us from earlier in the evening. Ladies and gentlemen, that does conclude our first ever Hollywood to Hampton Walk of Fame event. Thank you and good night, and at this time, I would invite pictures, yes? So, any pictures. So, students, walk the red carpet. Let's all get on the red carpet. Oh, I don't want to take my picture.
Alright, well, thank you, Mr. Gary Skeen, and thank you to our students. And, uh, Dr. Mason, that does conclude tonight's recognition portion. And when you have a moment, check out the cookies on the front.
Thank you, thank you all so much. I, I tell you, um, you guys never cease to amaze us with, with the creativity that you, you bring, um, to this recognition each year, so thank you. Board members, I'll give you an opportunity to, to share any words at this time. Dr. Woodhouse?
Well, first, I would say thank you so much for your consideration of the work that we do as school board members. I'm always intrigued to see how creative and innovative you all are with the way that you present to us and honor us each year. So again, I say thank you so much for your kindness and for your warmness towards us as school board members, and keep praying for us, too.
Anyone else? Ms. Cherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd also like to echo Dr. Woodhouse's sentiments. It's always special to be recognized by your own, and a lot of times, that just, that just doesn't happen, because some people assume that you know how much you care, but when you step out of the box and do something that's awesome, it really means a lot to us. And I can tell you, for me personally, to have involved the students, because that's why we're here. So for you to involve students in this, um, participation tonight just speaks volumes. And I would say that, we know it's, um, School Board Appreciation Month throughout the state of Virginia, but I really think you all should submit this to VSPA, so you can show them how it's supposed to be done. I really think you should, but thanks again, we really appreciate it.
Alright, anyone else? Dr. Banks Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's kind of like... I don't know what that's about. Okay.
We're just gonna talk loudly, how about that? Oh, alright, just turn it off. So it's very, it's a humbling experience every time that we have the school board recognition period. We're just fine. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Perfectly fine. Can you try again?
When he pushes that over here.
Don't push it over. You're messing up my spiel. So anyway, I just want to thank you all so much. It is a very humbling experience. You all don't have to go above and beyond the call of duty to honor us, but it is, it's so special for us to see that you guys, you really do appreciate it. From the bottom of my heart, I do appreciate all of you so much.
Alright.
Thank you. Mr. Samuels?
Hope this works. Kelly Goral, you are amazing. You know how to make us feel so appreciated, and I just want to say, you know, I've been on the board third, my third term, and each year that you guys do these recognition on behalf of the school board, it just blows my mind every year. And I'm so appreciative that you all take the time out, not just you, but the department takes the time out to really acknowledge the board for their work. This is really special to me because Molly, from Kickitane, Madison- This is really special to me because Molly, from Kickitahin, Madison, from Kickitahin, I was hoping that she would present my gift, because Madison is my son's sailing partner at U sail Virginia. And it really, it really resonate with me that, I'm not quite sure who recognized that Molly's special, Madison's special to me, but it is, I just want to say thank you for whomever selected Madison to be my presenter, I appreciate it so much. So, I'm excited to go home and say, guess who presented my award at the school board meeting? And to share that with my son. And it's just special to me, thank you.
I just want to, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thank you to everyone who had anything to do with putting this presentation tonight. Of course, we know Ms. Gore often takes the lead in these things, but I know that there's a team that worked with her to get it done, and so thank you so much, very appreciative. It's just an honor to serve, really, without any type of gift or recognition. It's just really just an honor to be able to serve the students here in the city of Hampton and these lovely administrators and teachers and all the staff in the division. And so, thank you again, very much.
Mr. Kilgore?
I would like to thank the entire team for that effort. I've had quite a few of these. And every year is special, every year I'm blown away at the creativity. I remember even during the pandemic, we did, we were agents, and we all got sunglasses. So, it was pretty cool. But I also want to say that, you know, we, none of us, I think, sit up here looking for the recognition, but we all absolutely appreciate it. There are 132 school divisions in the state of Virginia, and so there are an awful lot of people that truly believe in public education and are the heart of education. And I can't say enough about how great Hampton City Schools is. As we go around the state and we go to conferences and we see other school divisions, we stand so proud because of what the people and the students in this school division do every single day, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. And from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much. I can't say enough about all of the hard work that goes into Hampton City Schools, and it truly is a team effort. It truly is a team effort, and you all give us something to brag on each and every day. When we go, like, as Kilgore was saying, we go to these conferences and we travel around the state, we talk about all of the wonderful things that's happening within Hampton City Schools and the city of Hampton. Because we know without a shadow of a doubt that we are truly moving the needle on teaching and learning and innovation here in the city of Hampton. So, thank you all for all that you do, and that goes out to our community. We do have our city manager here with us tonight, Ms. Mary Bunting, and all that they do as far as supporting the city. We also have our chief of police, Mr. Jimmy Wideman, here as well. So, it's a community effort in terms of what we do with Hampton City Schools. And just know, as a board, we take nothing for granted, and we continue to work hard each and every day to make sure that we are doing what we can for each child here in the city of Hampton. Every child, every day, whatever it takes. Thank you so much. Where's your applause, Cy Kelly? Okay, so, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Banks Gray that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Any discussion? Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
All right, motion carries. And at this time, it gives me great pleasure to turn the meeting over to our wonderful superintendent, Dr. Raymond Haynes, who's doing a stellar job of leading this division into higher heights on our next adventure into teaching and learning. So, Dr. Haynes?
Thank you, Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of the board, vision leadership team in the Hampton community. We're pleased to model the One Community, One Transformation process as we have an update on the Academies of Hampton Master Plan 2.0. As our chairman Mason mentioned, we're pleased to have, honored to have the city manager, Mary Bunting, and chief of police, Jimmy Wideman, here, of which you will hear a lot about later on in the presentation. So, here tonight for our board report, Ms. Mika Pollitt, Chief of Secondary School Leadership, will provide an update on Master Plan 2.0 to include information about our mid-year review with Ford Next Generation Learning and the signature experiences occurring at the high school level. She will be joined by Ms. Veronica Hurd, the Director of the Academies of Hampton.
Thank you. School Board Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Dr. Banks Gray, members of the school board, Hampton City School Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, and our Hampton community, good evening. I am excited to stand before you this evening as we share updates from the Academies of Hampton Master Plan 2.0. As the very first Ford Next Generation Learning community to receive the K-12 designation, we remain focused on creating and implementing structures and processes to propel our work and enhance experiences for our students. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Veronica Hurd, Director of the Academies of Hampton, to the podium to share updates, opportunities, and of course, celebrations.
Again, good evening, and thank you ever so much for allowing us to be here to provide you with an update on the Academies of Hampton. Before we get started, I definitely wanted to start with an African proverb, which basically says, knowledge is a garden. If it isn't cultivated, you can't harvest it. It takes a village, as we know, to raise a child, but it also takes a village to allow that child to know the warrior that's within them, and that's what we're doing here, we're allowing our young people to see themselves. The Masse Plan 2.0 update, if I can get the thing to work. Thank you, Ms. Oliver, or Dr. Oliver. So, here's the agenda for today. You can see Masse Plan 2.0, intentional planning for student success. We will discuss the ecosystem of support, shared accountability. We will also highlight the Ford Next Generation Learning mid-year review and retreat. In addition to that, we will do a tactical team highlight through the lens of family engagement, and then we will follow that up with the high school signature experiences, and then we will also celebrate two items that are not technically up there just yet. Thank you, Ms. Oliver. So, Masse Plan 2.0, basically, as we know, we use the Ford Next Generation Learning strand to transform Hampton City Schools into small learning communities. These small learning communities are now not just at our high schools, they are across our divisions. So, when you think of the Academies of Hampton, you're looking at transforming teaching and learning through the high school, middle school, and elementary areas. So, when you think about this, it's looking at thematic, small learning communities through identity development, career identity, and college and career lens of interest. At the high school level, again, those are a college and career lens of interest at the academies, the 16 that we have. Middle school, we look at those through a community focus, and in high school, you see that, excuse me, elementary school, you see that through a worldly exploratory lens. Everything we do puts that young person at the center, which is the portrait of a Hampton graduate, to ensure our young people graduate prepared for life, lifelong learning, and careers after high school. When we look at the young person and the village that surrounds that young person, we know that consists of community, home, and school to move that young person forward. This is One Community and One Transformation, excellence with intentionality. Shared accountability is at the cornerstone of everything that we do with the Academies of Hampton. To really move the Academies of Hampton forward and Hampton City Schools, it takes a genuine transformation. But to do that, we have to look at the operating structures that surround Hampton City Schools in addition to shared accountability measures to ensure that we're moving forward in an intentional manner. When you think of the Academies of Hampton, many of you have heard of the Steering Committee. We also have another committee known as the Operating Committee and Shared Accountability Board. This Operating Committee and Shared Accountability Board monitors the progress and quality of the implementation across the implementation areas. So, as you can see here, implementation progress, the fidelity of that implementation, and the quality of the implementation. This, again, is the governance structure of the Academies of Hampton from the operating perspective. Of course, you all, along with city council, are helping us to steer the way. In addition to the Steering Committee, which is co-chaired by Dr. Haynes and city manager, Mary Bunting, we also have, again, as mentioned before, the operating and the Shared Accountability Board. What is interesting to notice here is that this is co-chaired by Dr. John Caggianno, felt the need to say your full name, Dr. Caggianno, in addition to the city of Hampton Economic Development. But what we want to highlight here is that when you're looking at Masse Plan 2.0, it's again, looking at Hampton City Schools and all the systems that make up Hampton City Schools to move this from a high school transformation to a K-12 transformation. Each one of our division leadership members oversees one of the tactical plans that have been chunked down to make up Masse Plan 2.0. They are co-chaired along with a business partner to help move this transformation forward, not only from the lens of education, but also from the lens of the business incorporations as well. So, for instance, here is, you're fine, when you look at tactical plans, we have each co-chair above, below you'll see a tactical teams. The tactical teams, just like we did with the high school, consist of educators and business partners who come together to focus and zero in on the tactical lens. Thank you, Dr. Oliver. So, here's just a snapshot, I'm not going to get too far into it, but you do have access to it. This is one way to just show you how we're taking the Masse Plan 2.0, which is a robust document that really highlights all our tactical efforts, and it narrows it down into a spreadsheet format that helps us to track progress. What you'll see in this document, it highlights each goal that is part of the tactical. So, for instance, this one here is the organizational systems and structures. You will see that it highlights the action steps, each one of those action steps under a particular goal, and then it also indicates the status of that action step. This progress monitoring document then allows us to indicate by the month progress where there is providing evidence or areas of need as we continue to go through the transformation. This document is made available to the school board in addition to the Steering Committee so you can progress, check progress monitoring as you move along, but also you will see areas in there highlighted where we need some additional support. Ford Next Generation Learning, we're here last week, on January 30th through the 31st, to help us not only review our progress, but also to move our efforts forward through a retreat manner. We focused on two areas. Session one, we brought together a cross-section of teachers, administrators, counselors, coaches, coordinators, family engagement specialists, and along with division leaders. And we zeroed in on transforming and teaching and learning from the perspective of the portrait of a Hampton graduate, and we started to peel back, what are the indicators of success from the young person's perspective when we're saying communication, collaboration, and leadership? When we can identify what that looks like, then we can ensure that our instructional practices are made available to help our young people reach those goals. In addition to that, we had a session two, which brought together our business partners to look at our partnerships between schools and community. We had the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, we had Hampton E.D., along with community planning, in addition to the Phoebus Business District, join us to explore our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats around our business partner integration efforts. Through collaborative conversation, not only did we have exploratory conversations around those areas, more importantly, we decided on what should happen next. So, we were working with our business partners to move from a space of support to a space of ownership with some of our business partner integration efforts. Intentionally, when you look at transforming teaching and learning and our business partner integration efforts, naturally, you have to look at the center, which is the systems and structures that make up this work. When we think of Hampton City Schools, to move this needle forward, not just for some students, but for all students, we have to make sure we have the appropriate structures in place to ensure that this work happens, and so those organizational structures become alive in the middle. One of the tactical highlights that we wanted to share with you all today, this is part of the family engagement tactical team, and as we mentioned before, it takes an ecosystem around the student to move the student forward. And so, we would like to showcase today one of the tactical highlights, which is the Hampton City Schools' community hubs. We are celebrating our community by going into our community and bringing together our families to have candid conversation around what does family engagement look like and feel like. Together, through these collective conversations, we are going to work to come together to define what family engagement means and looks like for our division. So, we, in addition to defining family engagement, we're celebrating what are being known as community hubs. There are businesses in our community who are opening the door and allowing us to come together, be present with one another, to connect, to move our division forward while we're also showcasing the business. The first one that we had was on January 17th, it was at Sweet Bean, and so, thank you, Sweet Bean, for opening your doors to us. We had music, refreshments, and great conversation around engagement. Everyone in the space was coming from the space of being a family member, one way or another. We de-clothed ourselves as being educators, and we were all just equals in the space having conversation. You can also see, in addition to this, we celebrated the business partners. They were ecstatic to receive a certificate honoring their work, which was signed by chairperson, Dr. Mason, Dr. Haynes, city manager Bunting, and the mayor. So, they are putting, I think it's already on the wall, but they were eager to put it on the wall. In addition to that, we also brought together some of our students, so we have two students who are working with the young people who were also in attendance. We wanted to remove barriers that our parents might have been and would not be able to join us, and so we had daycare or childcare services awaiting them. In addition to that, if anybody needed transportation to get there, we also removed that barrier for them as well. So, I'd like to say special thank you to Lily, the future child, she's going to be an elementary teacher, and Leila, our future child therapist, who are now going to be our interns with the community hubs and continue to work with our young people who attend these sessions. You can see we have more coming along, so we're bringing the cross-section of parents every month. There will be different parents every month because we're peeling back what is the definition of family engagement by engaging families to explore that conversation. This is being led and facilitated by Shonda Epps, who oversees family engagement for the division. In addition to that, it's an extension of Dr. Barrow's Family Engagement Tactical Team, which is also supported by the academy coaches and coordinators. As we continue to move the transformation forward, of course, we are working feverishly on the signature experiences that make up the three through eight, but we also have signature experiences at the high school that we wanted to just remind you all of. So, again, commitment to graduates coming up, so we do hope that you can join us as our young people commit to graduating in four years. We also are going to bring in our community partners for a behind-the-scenes look on March 20th to see which ways they can engage with our four high schools. We will also have our Division Project-Based Learning Showcase coming up, so please mark your calendars. The two things I'm going to highlight here will be the junior job shadowing and the summer internship, click for me, please, that are highlighted here. We are committed to transforming what it means to teach and learn in Hampton City Schools for not just some students, but for all students. And so, one of the commitment areas for our juniors is that they will have a job shadowing experience. So, we have approximately 1,500 juniors who will be embarking on a job shadowing experience between February and March. We do need your support to allow us, or to entice some additional businesses to take on our students for a job shadowing experience. Now, the difference between a career awareness or site visit is that they just go look. With the job shadowing, they take a little bit of deeper dive by trying something in that business. And so, we do look forward to your support with opening the doors to more businesses to working with us to offer a job shadowing experience for our young people. In addition to that, there's nothing new, but we will also have the internship, paid internship, thank you, Dr. Oliver, paid internship this summer. And so, we are, again, still looking for businesses who would like to host a young person for a paid internship this summer, it would be up to 40 hours on the internship site. We will work in partnership with them to design a meaningful internship, not only for their organization, but also for the student at the center of that work, too. Now, when we talk about moving this work forward, we can't do it in isolation, and so we definitely want to take a moment to celebrate two partners who have done the ultimate commitment and become named partners. This means that they have committed... commitment and become named partners. This means that they have committed $100,000 of in-kind hours, whether that's from creating experiences for students, adults, and/or looking at curriculum, various different ways that they can engage with us. And so the first one we are going to announce tonight is the Virginia Ship Repair Association Maritime Academy. They have committed to moving not only this academy forward, but all the pathways that also make up the Maritime Academy. I would like to now invite Joe Fremell from the Virginia Ship Repair Association to the podium to accept his plaque and just to say some remarks.
I just want to thank you for the opportunity, because really on a personal level, the opportunity, you know, I've spent 30 years Navy. This is kind of my position of giving back to the community. A lot of what we're trying to do here within this partnership of really bring the industry, the maritime, both shipbuilding, ship repair industry into the high schools and ultimately K through 12, because if we're going to feed that industry, because there's a need for it, we got to start the younger the better. And to be part of that process, you know, I just appreciate the opportunity.
Before Joe returns, or Mr. Fremell returns, we would like to invite Hampton High School to join Joe up for a picture. And I don't know if it's appropriate for you all to join as well?
You each have Hollywood's stars in front of you. Look at that. All right, ready? Keep smiling. All right, hopefully some of these will have one per, one that, no, no eyes closed.
No, they look good. We checked them for you. Thank you ever so much. The next named partner this evening we would like to announce would be the Named Pathway Partner with the Long Public Safety Academy. The Named Pathway will be for law enforcement. And so we would like to now ask Chief Wyman to join us to accept the plaque on our behalf and then to also say some remarks on behalf of the partnership.
Good evening all, everyone. We thank you. This was natural for us, because we already have such an amazing partnership and relationship with Hampton City Schools and our community. So this was just the next logical step, not only to benefit us as an organization to enhance that partnership, but to bring, you know, opportunity and, you know, good sound support to the young folk. So we're like-minded. It fits. We thank you for your time and consideration, but we were here to do it anyway. There it is. Thank you.
Team Bethel, if you can join us for a picture.
City Manager Bunting?
Thank you ever so much. So again, this is one community, one transformation. We cannot do it in isolation. There are many people I stand before you as a vocal point, but there's so many around me from the Academy Coaches and Coordinators who move this work day in, day out to make it happen in support of the Academy Principals, the Executive Principals, and the various others, of course, Division Leadership. But as you have noted here, it takes our partnerships to really transform what teaching and learning looks like. They are co-designers in this transformation, and we cannot transform what it means to teach and learn without them. So we are grateful. Coming up on May 1st, we will have an additional Academies of Hampton update. This one will focus on signature experiences from the grades three through eight perspective. And so we know you're all looking forward to that, especially Dr. Harris. And so we're excited to share that information with you soon. And that is the conclusion of our presentation.
Thank you so much. Board members, comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excellent presentation. Thank you, Ms. Hurd and Ms. Pollard for that. So many things just jumped out to me as you were talking. I'll try to make it really quick. But the community hubs, which I'd already gotten some information or feedback about, I think is just an exceptional idea. Family engagement at any level is always a good idea. And to take that engagement to the community where our parents are and to remove the barriers that are present for them to attend, I think is just exceptional. I mean, that's really the only way to engage. You can't have barriers there and not try your best to address them. So the childcare, the transportation, I think it's just, it's exceptional. It's taking it to the next level to ensure that our parents can be engaged. And so really kudos about that. And then just being in the community, you know, it's hard for parents to get out and come out anyway sometimes with the amount of demands that are on them. And so to go to them, I think in different places is a really stellar idea. So kudos to that as well. From behind the scenes conversations that I've had with Ms. Hurd and Ms. Judge and those of you in the administration, I'm really excited about how this business integration, how these supports, how we're making sure that they're inclusive for all students. And I think that that should be said to the public, because I know that that's happening, the conversations that I've had, that the businesses that we are approaching, that we're asking, and that we're wanting to make sure that all of our students with all types of abilities, those who are on diploma tracks and those who are not, are able to have meaningful work experiences. And that's job shadowing experiences, that's intern experiences, not, you know, just letting them be exposed to things that they may not have been exposed to otherwise. So kudos to that. I know that a lot of effort is going into ensuring that these businesses understand that and are on board. And so I'm really excited about it, really excited to hear data later on about how many of our students participated in these experiences that may not have been on a diploma track. I think, you know, the public would be really wowed to hear it. So thank you so much for your presentation. It was awesome, and I'm just looking forward to the next community hub, because again, I heard so many great things about it. I would love to be there.
Dr. Banks, great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I have a hot mic, y'all. Want to share? So you know, this is near and dear to my heart, because I was on the first Steering Committee. So this is so exciting to see the continued rollout of Master Plan 2.0. And might I say, the community hubs are absolutely brilliant. And I do know, and I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I know you do have some of your staff in the audience. And can we please just give them a round of applause for their hardware? If they could stand, please. All the work that you all do does not go unseen, and we know what you're doing for our community, and we applaud you all. Now, I do know, I do have a quick question. It was not in your presentation. So I know our flying classrooms in partnership with our floating classrooms, they fit in the structure of our academies. Can you just briefly tell us the next steps, where we are with both of those models, please, ma'am?
You're very timely. So Captain Barrington Irvin literally just landed a couple of hours ago. We're meeting with them tomorrow along with an architect to continue to develop the rendering of what the vessel's going to look like inside. We, the last time you saw the vessel, it had bits and pieces in there, and now it has nothing in there. It's a blank canvas. We continue to work closely with our young people to imagine what do we want the physical space to look like. And so we're in the process of not only getting the renderings to indicate what that's going to look like for the future, but we're also continuing the construction efforts. In addition to meeting with our students, they're doing virtual, and they're also visiting the vessel as well, so they continue to go forward. Ms. Tina Jackson has been leading that work and doing a phenomenal job.
Absolutely amazing. Job well done. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other board members?
Thank you, Chairman Mason. Outstanding presentation. I just want to highlight the slide, I can't remember, I believe, Slide 5. And when we're talking about transforming teaching and learning, that environment, and transforming partnership between schools and community, I just want to acknowledge that we have a great partner at Kickitown High School with the School Age Program with Ms. Smith, and where she has afforded 17 of her junior students that are in 11th grade in the Teaching and Learning Academy to intern with the School Age Program, and which it is changing the landscape of the teaching and learning to a project-based teaching and learning where they're learning about child development. And at the same time, they're earning monies that they put towards, you know, in their savings account. And Ms. Bunting could potentially spend that money back into the city. So it's like a great cycle for us to offer that opportunity to them. And the fact that they come to the School Age Program with a curriculum that is designed by the student and teachers at Kickitown High School that is being utilized with our students. So they're gaining that practical world experience as they transition to college or the workforce. So Ms. Smith, thank you so much for, with that. Appreciate it.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Wonderful presentation. I hope I called your names right, Ms. Hurd, Ms. Pollard. All right, thank you. I did have a question concerning the transformation partnership and the interaction between schools. Could you kind of, I may have missed it. I may have missed out on it. And sometime my eyes and my head are not operating together. But could you kind of, what did that consist of, really?
Are you referring to the mid-year review or which portion?
Both.
So the mid-year review would afford being here. So for Next Generation, we had our two transformational coaches who have been with us in the entire time, in addition to our new transformational coach, because Paula Barkley is actually retiring. And so we're now working with Lisa Olesky. But basically what it looked like with the retreat, excuse me, the review portion, we provided them with data and a snapshot of the progress we made so far with the transformational efforts. And then the second portion was to start working on projects that we know we already need to move forward. And so with the Portrait of a Hampton Graduate, we started focusing on the qualities of the portrait, the big overarching things that we usually see, and started peeling those back through dialogue around what are these indicators of success. And that was one portion, so we'll continue to do that work. And then on the other side of the house with the business partnerships, we had exploratory conversation about how do we deepen our partnerships from going to, from a space of support to ownership, not only to meet our needs, but also to meet their needs, compounding our efforts. I hope that makes sense.
Yes, it makes sense. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, sir.
All right. Other board members, comments or questions?
I do want to say, this was just absolutely amazing. Once again, it speaks volumes of the work that's being done. But I do want to highlight our partners. Mr. Gremmel said, thank you for the opportunity. You know, thank you, you know, because we know that we can't do the work of teaching and learning and the whole transformation that we're looking at without partners, without people in our community that truly care about what's happening with our students. So thank you for taking advantage of the opportunity that you spoke of. But thank you so much. And then also our city, you know, we can't say enough about the work that's being done, our police department, but also our city manager was on board from beginning. When we talk about this work and we share what's going on with Hampton City Schools, we talk about the relationship that started. And Mary Bunting was right there at the beginning. And so one of the things I talk about with other school divisions, I tell them, don't just get a city manager, get you a Mary Bunting. Not our Mary Bunting, but get your own, okay? All right. So thank you so much for all of the work that each of you are doing in our community. And it truly takes a village, it takes a community. And I can't speak to that enough as relates to how we intend to transform or continue to transform the teaching and learning, but also transform our own community. So thank you all very much to each of our partners. And thank you all, once again, Ms. Hurd, Ms. Pollard, for a great presentation on Master Plan 2.0.
Dr. Haynes?
Mr. Chair, our next presentation will be FY 2025 Preliminary Budget Forecast by Dr. Michael Thornton, our interim Chief Financial Officer, who I believe will also be accompanied by Ms. Ashley Ranger, our Budget and, Budget and Grants Manager, I'm sorry. I had it at the tip of my tongue. Ms. Ranger's our Budget and Grants Manager. Dr. Thornton?
Thank you, Superintendent Haynes, Chairman Mason, Chairwoman Banks, Great, School Board members. It's good to be with you this evening. It's been 18 years, I guess, full circle, but it's good to be back here with you. This evening, we want to provide the Board and the community with an update on where we are in the development process for the 2024-25 budget. You will receive the Superintendent's Proposed Budget scheduled for March the 6th. So tonight, we're going to provide the Board and the community with an update on where we are in the process. Certainly, the objectives remain the same from one year to the next. Number one, we're going to provide the Board with an update on our fund structure, as well as the process, the School Board priorities that are driving this particular budget for this upcoming fiscal year, as well as a forecast on the revenues, the change in the composite index, as well as the projected change in the average daily membership, an overview of the Governor's Introduced Budget for the new biennium, and then the expenditure pressures, and a look at next steps and key dates. Certainly, the School Division operates seven funds. The major fund, of course, is the School Operating Fund, nearly $300 million. And then, of course, you have your School Food Service Fund, your reimbursable projects fund, which are your major federal and state grants, as well as your rental income fund, your athletics fund, your student activity fund that is managed at the school level. And then, of course, most recent fund is that of the Resource Toolkit Fund 95. Tonight, we'll focus on those variables or those factors of the School Operating Fund. Of course, when you receive the Superintendent's Proposed Budget, you'll receive information on all of those seven funds. The budget development process is consistent, the same process that you've employed the last several years that has produced a quality budget. We're following this year. Of course, your Chief Finance Officer Brittany Branch is out, and I am honored to be standing in her place. But a lot of the work had already been done. The process is consistent. And of course, with the support of Ashley Ranger, your Budget Manager, we are moving along in a great way. So we've already gone through the planning and data collection process. The Superintendent's Budget Committee has been meeting the last several weeks to put together what will be the Superintendent's Proposed Budget. And it's our expectation that he will present to you a balanced budget. And then, of course, the Board will deliberate over that budget throughout the month of March with the plan to approve the School Board's budget at the end of March. And then it'll be transmitted over to the City Manager for consideration for appropriation by the City Council. And then finally, we'll be monitoring the state budget throughout the process as well, and updating the Board throughout that process. Certainly, each year, the School Board adopts priorities to really guide the work and influence the work. This year, maximize every child's learning, focusing on student achievement and the Academies of Hampton that you received the presentation on this evening, as well as attracting, developing, and retaining exceptional staff, and creating a safe and nurturing school environment. As I mentioned, the focus from this point forward will be on your General Operating Fund. It's our expectation at this point that the General Operating Fund, total revenues will be just over $288 million. Of course, nearly $200,000. Of course, nearly two-thirds of that is your state funding. Now, every two years through the biennial process, the state recalculates your local composite index, which is that indicator that the state uses to determine a locality's ability to fund their general operating budget. So your composite index for this next biennium is actually lowered from .2731 to .2579. And essentially, what this does, it shifts more of the burden of funding the SOQs back to the state. In terms of projecting your average daily membership for purposes of projecting your state revenue that is based on your average daily membership. Currently, the budget for 2024 is based on 19,036 students. We're projecting 18,814 students for next year, and that'll be the basis for projecting our state revenue. And what the school division has traditionally done is utilize the projected enrollment from the state. And of course, we monitor that throughout the year. The projected enrollment for next year is approximately 222 students or just over 1.2% decrease compared to this year. Governor Yonkin introduced his proposed biennial budget back in December. The first year, of course, is July 1, '24 through June 30, '25. And that's the focus of our budget as we adopt budgets on an annual basis. Of course, each biennium, we re-benchmark, the state re-benchmark adjustments, particularly around SOQ costs. Proposed tax reforms, the governor has in his proposed budget some tax reforms, particularly in the area of sales and income tax. This does not have a direct impact on schools per se, but certainly, the revenue projections that the governor is providing is based on these two reforms. Included in the governor's budget is funding, the state share funding for 1% bonus for FY '25. And for Hampton City Schools, based on your LCI, that would equate to about a million dollars in state funding, but it costs about 1.6% to provide that bonus. There's an increase in at-risk funding, K3 class size funding, and an increase in basic aid funding to support the continued expansion of reading specialists to grade eight. As you know, the governor's current budget includes a number of one-time funding sources. And with next year, it is proposed that those one-time funding sources will go away. They'll be eliminated, including the all-in per pupil funding at 10.2 million, the grocery tax hold harmless at 3.9, the benchmarking hold harmless 2.1 million, and then, of course, the 5% salary supplement 11.3 million. Overall, state funding, based on the governor's projected budget for Hampton City Schools, is expected to decrease by $2 million. Of course, the general assembly, through the action of both the House and the Senate, they will still deliberate on the budget and certainly make adjustments to the budget. And we'll be monitoring those over the next several weeks headed towards a scheduled adjournment the second Saturday in March, I believe. Additions based on the governor's budget include $21 million for basic aid as a result of re-benchmarking, 2.5 million for decrease in the LCI. So again, as I mentioned earlier, your LCI, your composite index is going down from .2731 to .2579. And that's roughly about 2.5 million in additional state funding for Hampton City Schools. Another increase, $1 million for the 1% bonus for SOQ-funded positions, 1.5 million for at-risk funding, and 1.3 for K3 primary class size funding. Reductions in state funding include 1.8 million for SOQ-based funding based on lower projected enrollment or average daily membership for next year, $10.2 million for the all-in pupil funding. It's one-time in nature, although school divisions will be allowed to carry that over from this year to next year as well. It is our expectation that the bulk of that funding will be available, and we have plans for it for next year as it did not come until this past fall. 3.9 million for grocery tax hold harmless is going away, 2.1 in re-benchmarking hold harmless is going away, going away next year, and 11.3, as I mentioned earlier, for the 5% salary adjustment for SOQ-funded positions. In terms of expenditure pressures, competitive compensation for teachers and staff is always a pressure, but certainly is something that the school division, the school board has been committed to over the last several years here in Hampton, as well as making every attempt to hold employees harmless to any increases in health insurance costs. And that continues to be one of the superintendent's priorities as well. The recruitment and retention of exceptional staff, status of quality funding and staffing changes, federal pandemic grant closure. Of course, you know that ESER III, the final ESER funds are going away effective September 30, 2024. So essentially, we're closing that out for this fiscal year. And then, of course, the rising cost of inflation-driven factors such as utilities, supplies, and materials. And then, of course, we're in the process now of reviewing responses for a proposal related to our outsourcing of custodial services and, of course, athletics. Next key steps, the superintendent will be having a series of two-by-two meetings with board members over the next couple of weeks. And then we'll continue to monitor general assembly actions. Both the House and the Senate are expected to have crossover at the end of the month. And then they will have their conferees negotiate the budget as they do every year. And hopefully, this year, they will adjourn on time with a new state biennial budget. Of course, when the superintendent presents his budget on March the sixth, it will be based on the governor's introduced budget as it relates to state funding. And then the board has scheduled a series of public work sessions and public hearings to review and deliberate over the budget with the goal of approving what will be the school board's budget on March the 27th. Happy to answer any questions at this point.
Questions from board members? Comments? Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the presentation, Dr. Thornton. It's nice to have you back here, filling in for Ms. Branch, because as we all know, you have done this job with your eyes closed in the past. We appreciate that. And with Ms. Ranger-
My glasses are much thicker now.
Okay. And with Ms. Ashley Ranger being around, of course, you just can't escape it. You know, you're all things budget to us. And we appreciate your expertise. And the fact, Mr. Superintendent, that you were able to pull that together for us so that we'd have a seamless transition. One of the things I'd like to point out is the fact that I'm very pleased that the superintendent, in conjunction with the budget development team, which we know is an entire team, is really focused on us holding harmless our employees as it relates to insurance costs. Because as he said in the past, and as his board feels, it would be a shame to give a raise to employees and then they have to turn around and take it out of their pocket and increase insurance costs. So I'm real pleased that that's being looked at with, as our superintendent says, with intentionality. The second thing I wanted to do is just ask a question. I know you talked about the budget being focused on Fund 50, which is our operating budget, of course. But when we began to analyze the budget as we go forward, I know we can do it by function, which may be an example of salaries. And then we can do it by, we're an object, which might be salaries. Then we can do it by function, which may be instruction. Or we could do it by subfunctions, which may be something like special education. So as we move forward and analyzing this year's budget, especially as it relates to Fund 50, would you, what would you say would be the focus? Would it be by the object, the function, sub-function, or a combination of all?
Well, in looking at your traditional practices, I would think that we will continue to look at it by function, instruction, attendance, health, operations, maintenance, transportation, technology. And then within that, we will look at the objects which drills down to the lowest level of expenditure, beginning with personnel costs, health benefits, which is about 80 to 85% of your budget. So we will follow that format.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Of course, if the board had questions around specific programs like special ed, regular ed, CTE, and so forth, we can answer those questions as well.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Other board members? Questions? Comments? We're not going to go there tonight. Sophia?
I was just glad to hear Mr. Thornton say that we're looking at it through functions because that's a much better, you know, way to do it. Yeah.
And that's what you all traditionally have done.
Exactly.
Well, the report that will provide your monthly financial report is based on function as well.
Sophia?
Just out of curiosity, because I know I'm new here. What does the Student Activity Fund entail? Like, what does that cover for students?
So student activity funds are pretty much managed at the school level. Each school has their own student activity funds. And that's where we really much account for school-based activities, field trips, clubs. Some athletics are there, and it's really under the day-to-day management of the principal. And you have office managers or bookkeepers that manage those funds. But ultimately, they are the responsibility of the school board.
Okay. I'm sorry. I was just curious because I know, especially in the Performing Arts Academy, we've had some troubles funding for field trips, which were, you know, to go see shows and to go explore places that would help us to promote our education. And we were told that there would be some issues with funding, as well as some of the other, like choir field trips and things. So I just wasn't sure if that was covered underneath that.
Yes, ma'am. Good question.
Ms. Fong?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one quick question. Excellent presentation. Thank you so much for sharing tonight. The, I know we're looking at a proposed $2 million cut from the state budget, but we're looking at a $1.5 million increase for at-risk funding. What does the at-risk mean? Is, or is that, what population of students, I guess I would say?
I guess kids who traditionally, well, I'll defer to one of our instructional leaders.
What is the at-risk fund? What population of the-
Population of students.
Are we looking at for at-risk? Are we talking more about socioeconomic? Or are we talking about those who have disabilities and special needs?
Academic need.
Academic need. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other board members? Mr. Chair?
Oh, I hadn't hit the button, but I was about to.
I saw you.
Okay. Thank you. The student rep made me think of a question, actually. When it comes to athletics.
Yes, ma'am.
At one point, I know we were on like a rotating schedule for each of four of our high schools. So if I'm at Kikotan and it's the football team, I may get new uniforms, but Beth would have to wait till that next year. Do we still do that schedule, Dr. Kajana? Or who would, who would know if we're still doing that? And if not, how are we doing it?
Replacement schedule for equipment and uniforms.
Yeah. The only thing that I believe we had an exception to was helmets as it related to concussion protocol, which we got for everyone. But in terms of, you know, me saying my uniform needs to be updated, when is my chance? How are we doing that now?
Yes. Thank you for the-
And for all the teams. I just used football as an example.
We continue to rotate. However, it is more site-based at this point. We all know that the football uniforms and equipment do have a heftier cost than others. So the school division does support with direct funding for the football uniforms. However, for all sports, the athletic directors manage a budget for uniforms, and they outfit their teams on a rotating basis.
Okay. And that includes all sports, the, from volleyball right on to track?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
May I ask one?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I may be kind of off on this one too. Thank you so much. But the $2 million that we are losing from the state and then the 1.5 million, the $2 million, if I'm not mistaken, and you can correct me or let me know, is this, the $2 million, was that unrestricted fund than that $1 million? 1.5 is restricted fund, meaning that it has a particular area that it has to go into?
So the state does not categorize it as restricted or unrestricted? So the $2 million is the net effect of the change in composite index, but more so because of the declining enrollment. So the net effect of-
Right. Exactly. What about the 1.5 million? 1.5?
Trying to remember what the 1.5 was.
I think he mentioned it, but I just wanted to get a little bit-
Which one?
And maybe I need to ask this. 1.5.
There was an increase in at-risk funding of 1.5.
At-risk funding, right.
Right.
Yeah.
But the net effect of all of those changes at this point is a decrease of $2 million.
Okay.
You have some increases in some categorical areas. But then overall, it's coming down because of your enrollment changes as well as the change in your, in the re-benchmarking costs.
Yes. Yes. So they don't call it unrestricted, but you know, that's in my head.
But they're categorical, yes.
That's right category, right.
And that enrollment decrease is just 100 and some kids, right?
It's 222.
222? Okay.
That's the projected change.
Okay.
From 19036, current year.
Okay. So would that explain it? Okay.
Yeah, that's it right there. Exactly. Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Sophia?
One more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I forgot to ask when I was questioning earlier about student activities. I know that you said that that mainly falls within the principles of the school. But as far as clubs and like school sanctioned field trips outside or, I don't know, outside of like a 50-mile radius or something, or out-of-state trips, would that get covered under a student activity fund by the school board or by the principal?
Under the student activity funds.
Okay. Just wanted to-
Most of those activities are intended to be funded at the school level through either kids paying for those particular trips or fundraisers or any other activity that's generally school-based.
Okay. I just, again, speaking from performing arts, we do have some field trips like Virginia Thespian Festival and International Thespian Festival that cost hundreds upon thousands of dollars for students out of pocket. So I wasn't sure if that was covered by a fund. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you very much. I did have a question, but the superintendent and I were just going back, just in terms of looking at the change in our population. And we're just recognizing sometimes that is affected also by our transient military population as well. So just want to make sure that the community is aware of that in terms of the projected decrease in the number of students that we will be having next school year.
And if I might, Mr. Chair, as I went back and looked at, there's a graphic going back to 2021 where your enrollment was compared to what we're projecting or what the state is projecting for next year, the net effect over that four- or five-year period is only a decline of 41 students. So you've had years, recent years, where your enrollment is going up. So 1.2% decline in an urban setting or rural setting is not a bad, at this point. You don't want to lose, but it could be much worse.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Dr. Thornton, because you stepped right on in. I tell you, you didn't miss a beat.
Yeah, I don't know. It's been a while.
No one would know it if you didn't tell us. So thank you so much. Mr. Chair, me, Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chair, our next report is also from Dr. Thornton, our business operations financial report.
All right, Mr. Chair. School Board members, again, you have your monthly financial report for the month ending December 31, 2023. You have within your packet the monthly statement of revenues, expenditures, and encumbrances, budget to actual. Your revenues received through December 30, '23. For your general fund, again, total 103,323,987. And that represents 36% of your budget revenue of 287,06- And that represents 36% of your budget revenue of 287,066,783. Your expenditures, encumbrances totaling for the same period, 142.6 million, representing 46.9% of your total operating expenditure budget. We continue to monitor revenues and expenditures throughout the year on a monthly basis and make adjustments as necessary. And we'll continue to come back to the board on a monthly basis to update you on where we are. Any questions on your monthly financial report?
Board members? All right, Dr. Haynes? Oh, hold on one second. Mr. Kilgore?
I'll just point something out to board members based on that report, which gives your September ADM. You know, when we made the budget presentation, the comparison was from the ADM that we use for our FY '24 budget, 19,036.
Yes, sir.
And what we're projecting to be our student enrollment, yeah, in fiscal year 2025, that's 200 and some students. But the reality is, when you compare it to what our enrollment was in September of this year, it's only somewhere around 60, 60, 70 students different. So just, it's not like we're losing 200 and some students. The delta is fairly small, so.
Yes, sir. Board members, questions, comments? Dr. Haynes?
Mr. Chair, that concludes the superintendent's reports. Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to item number five on the agenda, which is items for action. We have 5.01, minutes of the school board meeting of January 10, 2024. 5.02, revisions of the school board meeting calendar. 5.03, revision of the school board policy GBE, staff health and safety. 5.04, revision of school board policy GC, instructional staff licensure. 5.05, revision of school board policy GCBB, athletic extracurricular supplements. 5.06, revision of school board policy GCBDC, personal leave. 5.07, revision of school board policy GCDA, effect of criminal conviction. 5.08, revision of school board policy GCL, professional staff development. 5.09, review of school board policy GCQA, non-school employment by professional staff member. 5.10, revision of school board policy GCQAB, compensation for off-site services. And 5.11, revision of school board policy KQ, commercial, promotional, and corporate sponsorships and partnerships. And so at this time, the chair will entertain a motion for the items for action. I would recommend that we actually take 5.01 and 5.02 individually, if the board so chooses, and then take the remaining items for action as a block. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of action item 5.01.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kilgore, and second by Mr. Samuels, that we approve item for action 5.01. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Abstain.
Ms. Saphanja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray? Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. That brings us to item number 5.02.
Mr. Chair, I move that we take action item 5.02 through 5.11. No, we're going to do two separate.
5.01, separate.
Not 5.02 to 5.11?
No.
5.02.
Well, I move that we, that we vote on 5.02.
Second.
All right, okay. It's been moved by Ms. Fonge that we, and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse, that we approve 5.02, revision of school board meeting, the meeting calendar. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Saphanja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. All right, and that leaves us with 5.03 through 5.11. And what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move approving of action item 5.03.
Thank you.
Through 5.11.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Dr. Banks Gray and seconded by Ms. Saphanja that we approve items 5.03 through 5.11 as a block. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Saphanja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number six, deliberation first read. Item 6.01, revision of school board policy JECAA, admission of homeless. 6.02, revision of school board policy JECB, admission of non-resident students. 6.03, revision of school board policy JECA, admission of resident children. 6.03, review of school board policy JECC, admission of military children. And they all belong to Ms. Hatchet tonight.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of the board, Dr. Haynes, and our Hampton City Schools family. And all of my policies are about how we are going to admit all of our students. So I will start with sharing with you that policy JECAA, admission of homeless students. There are changes to that policy. There are some language changes and some definition changes in there. And I would like to highlight that those were modeled after VSBA. And VSBA changes actually came from changes in the US Code under Title 42, Chapter 19, where they did look at the general definition and rework that for homelessness. So there are a lot of blue lines on that, that policy. And then the revision for school board policy JECB, which is the admission of non-resident students. This is coming back because in cross-referencing this policy with policy JECA, we detected a typo where a "A" was left out of the Code of Virginia reference that was listed in that policy, and that was a pretty important part of that code. So we did go back and make that correction, you will see, and then add that language that further connects the two policies of resident children and non-resident children together, as those are cross-references and important that they work in tandem. And then the next policy, which is admission of residents' children, is JECA. And there are some changes there, again, to reflect the VSBA policy that includes references to the Code of Virginia. And then we had some language removed to better align with our current tuition policy and that other policy, JEBC. And then finally, we have the admission of military children, JECC. And that is a five-year review, and there are no recommended changes at this time to that policy.
Any clarifying questions for Ms. Hatchet? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now that brings us to item number seven on the agenda, hearing of any delegations or presentations of any written communications or petitions. And so far, I just have two, Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
That's it, okay. Ms. Bowers, would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk by 6:45 PM on the day of the meeting. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or matters germane to the business or duties of the school board. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
All right, thank you very much. First speaker this evening is Ms. Brenda Marks.
I decided to come see y'all tonight because I didn't want you to forget who I was.
Thank you, Ms. Marks.
In all seriousness, I've spent many nights before y'all complaining, begging, and pleading for your intervention in what seem to be insurmountable problems. Things at Phoebus are going far better than I could have ever imagined. We have had problems, some more severe than others, some the same I've had for 10 years. The difference is Ms. Brown and Mr. Coakley have spent their time resolving the problems instead of wasting their time trying to convince me that my demands were unreasonable or I didn't understand how the world worked, because I am not an educator. I want the teaching lesson I would like y'all to take away from this, who you appoint to run your schools matters. And when they don't fit, don't wait years to change them. You hurt your children, you hurt your families, and you hurt your schools. The second thing I want to talk to y'all about is the same thing I've been talking about for 10 years. Y'all are not serving our special needs children. Your motto that y'all know I despise is still hollow when it comes to the children who require a little extra work in the division. We have not had a CAC for at least two and possibly more years. For the last two years, y'all have promised that it was going to start back up. Anna will be fine as long as I am living and breathing. What bothers me is what about the children who do not have a Brenda for a mama? Or who have a mama who has a job? Or doesn't know where to go to find the resources they need? Special needs children make up approximately 13% of your population. I just found out that Mr. Harris is now over, Ms. Judge. He will be hearing from me. I'm running out of time. I sent y'all an email with an article about the sweeping changes in special education coming from the state. I would like to see Hampton go a step above this state, like you do in everything else you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. Next, we have Dylan Richardson.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Dylan Richardson, and I'm a graduate from Hampton High School. Today, I'm here to share about the exclusion of the Christian faith. It says, "The exclusion of the Christian faith refers to the absence of limitation of Christianity in public schools. It often involves the removal of religious symbols, prayers, or teachings from the educational environment. This topic is often debated due to the separation of church and state. In 2022, I started a Christian club and wanted to focus, I was focused for everyone to learn about God. But my friend that has special needs has passed away, and that hurt me so much, and she was one of my faithful members, and she didn't know nothing about Jesus, and I introduced her to him. And it's sad that we are losing brothers and sisters to gun violence every single day. Guns are the leading cause of death among American children and teens. One out of 10 gun deaths are aged 19 or younger. What's the purpose of education? To produce well-rounded humans equipped to thrive individually and as members of society. We simply cannot produce well-rounded students without religious education. I believe that we should work together as a team to talk about different religious beliefs. Even though I understand the separation of church and state, the state still says we still can have released religious instruction. I understand not everyone is a believer. I understand we have unbelievers, but we still need to have equal opportunity for all. I believe we should have open dialogues. I believe we should start working on group therapy for people that are believers, because not everyone don't have the money to send their students off to Christian education. Low income, not everyone have the money to go and pay for Christian education. So I believe the public school needs to start working on to make a change, because we are losing students to gun violence. The people are struggling with depression, anxiety, worry, fear, difficulty concentrating, drug use, alcohol use, peer pressure. All these students are struggling with this, and we need a change, because it's hard for us. It's not easy. And if you don't give us an opportunity to learn about God, it could be even more harder. So I just ask that Hampton City Schools to make a change for this nation. I'm finished.
Thank you. All right, and that takes us to item number eight, items for information. 8.01, next meeting. The next school board work session will be held on February 21, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School. And then also, the next regular scheduled meeting will be held on March 6, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School. And I just want to remind the viewing audience and the Hampton community that our meetings are here. We're not going to be at Rupert Sargent for our work session, which we normally are. We're going to be right back here at Jones Magnet Middle School. 8.02, I will start with our superintendent, Dr. Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Ms. Gore and the Public Relations and Marketing Department so nicely stated today, February is Virginia School Board Appreciation Month, and thank you to Mr. Skeen for being outstanding emcee. We certainly appreciate the dedication of our school board and leadership, and thank you for your endless hours and support that you give to our students, staff, and families of Hampton City Schools, and also to your superintendent. Just a reminder that Friday, February 16, is an early release day, which means our elementary and middle school students dismiss two hours early, and all schools and administrative offices will be closed on Monday, February 19, in observance of President's Day. That concludes my informational items, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much. Other informational items from board members? Dr. Woodhouse?
This is not really an informational item, but it is a thank you. I want to say thank you to the board, to the superintendent, and to the staff, and some of you that are seated in the congregation. Congregation, sitting in the.
It's all right, Pastor Woodhouse.
I think I'm at, I think I'm at church in the audience. Thank you so much for your support during the demise of my mother. It was a difficult time for my family. But because of the cards and letters and the calls, and even the prayers, we were able to get through that time of bereavement. So I want to thank all of you so much. If I start calling names, then I have to call everybody's name that's in here. So I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you, individually and collectively. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? I do want to acknowledge, although we are celebrating acknowledging school board member appreciation. Next week is school board clerk appreciation. And if you know this group, you know it takes a lot to keep us together and to keep us corralled and on point and organized. And we have been very fortunate to have Ms. Bowers, who said, "Don't make a fuss about her." But it's not easy not to make a fuss about Ms. Bowers, you know, because she does so much for us. But she. But she has stepped in and she is our deputy clerk. She retired as a clerk of the board, but she is our deputy clerk. And so we do have a little something for you, Ms. Bowers, to say thank you very much. But we also do want to acknowledge our current clerk, Ms. Joyce Charbonneau, who's not with us tonight. She had a previously planned, um, engagement, uh, that she had to take. And so we want to, um, acknowledge her as well. And so that's going to do it for us, um, in terms of information from this board, um, with no other business to be brought before this board. I'm gonna move on to item number nine, which is the adjournment, and I declare this meeting of the Hampton City School Board adjourned.
Thank you.